For Monday, October 23rd. I'll remind us of our vision and mission, and then we'll get started. So the vision of our Milton School District is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And the mission that supports that vision is the School District of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. With that, I will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, the 23rd of October. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Donovan, are you aware of any changes we need to make to our agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you.
I have moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. That was Dave's motion, seconded by Rick, to approve our agenda. Does anyone have questions? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the minutes are included in board docs like usual.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on October 9th, 2023 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That was Rick's motion, seconded by Dave. Does anyone have any questions on the minutes? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. E on our agenda are vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $304,769.39 as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. John's motion was seconded by Dave to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount that he listed. Does anyone have questions? All in favor of approval of our vouchers, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes. A public comment, when I grabbed the sheet, I had no one signed up, so we will move beyond that. That brings us to Rich, the Superintendent update and our update from our administrators.
Yeah, the only agenda item on the Superintendent update for this meeting is our Red Hawk highlight. So we'll have our administrators come up and highlight things happening in each of our schools. I do want to share that we're competing for folks with a sixth through 12th grade choir concert tonight that started at 6:00 p.m. Some people are there and are here and going back there, so.
All right, so good evening. At our 4K through third grade level, we have been able to take the initial results of our first screener for iReady that we've done and looked at that data to be able to dissect and figure out which students are in need of reading intervention. We've been able to get that real intensive intervention going at this point in the school year. It takes about a quarter for those students to figure out how school goes, especially when they come to us at, our kindergartners being there for a full day is a really, really long time when you're five. But we've gone from herding cats to teaching children, and it's amazing. So that's wonderful. The, this time of year also brings big excitement and field trips to the pumpkin patch, as well as fall parties and family activities that have been held at each of our schools. We do have parent-teacher conferences this week, a great time to touch base with families about how the school is going, concerns that parents may have, and how we can continue to work together as a team to support our students. And, believe it or not, our students are also beginning to practice for their winter season. So lots happening in the K3 world. Our Northside administrative friends are at the concerts, listening to their students. So there are a few updates from Northside as well. They have a great partnership with the Friends of Northside, working toward a fundraising goal of new playground equipment for the students, coordinating a book fair, as well as organizing conference meals for our teaching staff. A special shout out to Mrs. Pennycook, who is the Friends of Northside president, and all of the volunteers for their efforts. And they, Northside will also be doing parent-teacher conferences this week, so working on building family partnerships. And at Northside, students are going to be sharing artifacts, and they're learning with their families, reflecting on their goals for the year, as well as the progress that they have made so far. So thanks to all of the staff to go above and beyond and work towards a 100% attendance school for Northside.
Good evening. I wanted to highlight the work that we did on our PD Day, which feels like a lifetime ago, it was October 2nd. But we spent some time writing note cards for students, where our goal is for all students to receive a handwritten note card from an adult at school during the first trimester. So we spent some time doing that. We had some mini sessions on added note taking and processing notes, so probably all remember those days. We could write the notes on the paper pretty easily, but what do you do with them after you have the notes on the paper? So we've really been talking about processing and how we're going to take those next steps with our notes. And then we did some iReady analysis and some Wisconsin Forward analysis from last year's information. Kind of an activity where teachers had one of their class rosters, and they were using that, that specific class roster to look for bright sides, areas of improvement, ways to reflect, so what they could connect from the information from that roster of students and what skills would be needed for grade-level reading for upcoming learning, and then take action section of that. So what skills do students need to have access to that core instruction? So that was the data deck that we did on our PD Day, and like I said, it feels like a lifetime ago, but that was our October 2nd PD Day. Thank you.
All right. And then at the high school, this last week, actually, well, a couple weeks ago, we took Chalk Talk screening. And so this last week, we've started an eight-week cycle for all of our juniors, our identified juniors are taking ACT support sessions during our study flex periods. So four days a week, Tuesday through Friday. Each day is a different section of the ACT, reading, writing, math, and science, where there's a different timer, which is supportive of about 60 students each day by intensive preparation for ACT, which would be the last week of February, which will be here closer than we realized. So that started this last week. Also then, on Monday, straight home room, we have been, this year, we've been taking a look at our data from Panorama last year. We've been having our SCL lessons that have been assembled by our student services staff. For example, today, all homerooms did a lesson on checking our assumptions, analyzing the assumptions we make about people. So these are, this is something a bit newer to the high school, that we have not necessarily done direct lessons like this in the past, but it's something that has been fairly well-received, and I'm really glad that we're doing that. We have, almost at the end of fall season for athletics, we have just girls swim still remaining. There are conferences this weekend, postseason afterwards, all other fall seasons have wrapped up, the tournament play in their seasons, and winter's right around the corner, so we are beginning to get ready for that. On November 10th, the eleventh to 12th is the Wizard of Oz. We have close to 80 students who are involved in some aspect of, whether it's the cast, the ensemble, the thorough orchestra, or the art club, which has been taking a pretty amazing set. That is November 10th and 11th at 7:00 p.m., and then Sunday matinee is at 2:00 p.m. Then also recently, we've been doing a lot of work, and teachers in our elective areas redesigning, taking a look at our curriculum. In our elective areas, specifically in business, in tech edge, those two in particular, but also actually our science and Spanish have been looking at this as well, taking a look at our current curriculum, the electives that we offer, and redesigning those as we have new staff, as we have new knowledge comes on board, as we talk to our community members about what is needed in the fields, especially in tech and in business. We'll be coming, in the upcoming weeks, sort of the curriculum committee, with some of the work that they've been doing, really proud of the work that they've been doing, and trying to stay up to date with what's needed. And finally, this last week, Amy Kenyon, Caitlin Lindy, and actually Mr. Donovan and myself were part of a panel on Rock County, looking at the shortage of in the healthcare field and significant challenges that many folks, not just the two hospitals in the area, S and S Mercy, but all healthcare providers, the challenge they have in filling people in those positions. There's a really good roundtable talking about how to increase the people going into those fields and what, and you know, Diamond High School, there are probably a bit left. Amy contributed, Caitlin Lindy, who is our co-sah, Health Education Students Association, we have over 40 students who are now actively involved in that, and that number is growing. So there's a lot of good discussions about that, and that's impacting some of those curriculum decisions we're coming to. That's advice.
Very good. Anything else, Rich, from Superintendent world?
No.
All right. Then we will move on. Three on our agenda course is a committee report, Finance Committee met a week ago, and John is going to capture what we touched on there.
Thanks, Joe. On Wednesday, October 18th, we held a Finance Committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. In attendance, we had committee members Joe, Dave, and myself, board members Tracy and Ed, along with Rich, Ross, and Carly. We got two items on the agenda. The first was the 2324 budget. The second was the tax levy. Both of these items, I believe I'm going to kick off to Ross, and he will go through them.
Right. While we did these presentations on screen, I do want to acknowledge that before we begin, I appreciate all the welcome for the last couple of months. I recognize that I came in at the end of this much development process. The past couple of months have been very enjoyable, just as a transition for myself, and also picking up a lot of work that carries out me in your retirement life. I wish you the best, and I know that this is the end of the current budget cycle, but I'm looking forward to starting the next cycle with this administrative team at this board. So thank you.
Okay, all right, good. I do want to acknowledge that the typical budgetary process for school districts begins at the end of the old cycle. So what we're going into tonight is the final discussion around the 2024 fiscal year budget. And in November, we're going to start already, and we'll be working with Rich on some high-level projections for the board in our discussions in November, that will inform how we begin our 2425 budget development. The estimates we're going to be working on in November are going to rely heavily on if we're in the middle of a state budget or creating a new state budget. Thankfully, this coming year will be a July year, so we will have some idea or some better idea of what to expect with that budget development. As we move forward into the spring, we're going to be identifying our staffing needs. And in June, between then and June, actually, we're going to be developing our preliminary budget adoption for the board to consider in June, which will then bring us back to this point again a year from now. I'm just going to click here. Oh, no. There we go. Hopefully, there. There are two key budgetary impacts I want to highlight for this discussion tonight, and the reason why we do this so late at the beginning of the school year. We have two big counts that we're waiting for in October, one of which we've been talking about for the last month, and that's the Third Friday count. But there's actually two different counts that we need to identify at this end of the year. One is the Third Friday count, or the head count, that we do in all of our buildings on the third Friday of September. But the one that I'm dealing with most of the time is a membership count, or a conversion of that head count into what's called full-time equivalency and inclusion of all of our summer school minutes of instruction. That's the number that informs our revenue limit, which is what we were setting over the last couple of weeks. The revenue limit is the state-imposed funding limit that we can collect from general aids and local tax levy. The limit is derived based on a three-year average of membership, so the past three years, multiplied by a local per pupil authority member. And that amount is different based on your municipality area or the school district area in the state. As we develop the revenue limit for, one, go ahead, Carly. There we go. A little too far. There we go. As we develop the revenue limit for this year, there was a lot of uncertainty going into June and over the last several months. On the board here, I've got identified that our Third Friday average, our three-year average, was 3387. Again, this is not a representation of head count in our building, this is a conversion of head count into a membership actee. Our revenue limit per member for the last several months has been in question. In the last couple of weeks, this has come into tighter clarity. I've been in one thing, I've been working with the Director of School Finance at the Department of Urban Instruction, and we very recently got confirmation that we will have access to the low debt ceiling, $11,000 that was included in the 2325 budget. That means our base revenue limit for this year is going up approximately $2 million, $2.6 million, and that's based on the inclusion of $11,000, as well as some one-time non-recurring exemptions which we'll go through in the event. Prior to the 2324 school year, it's worth highlighting that six of the last eight years of state budgets provide no increase with per pupil adjustment under the revenue limit. And that's one thing that has been kind of impacting many districts around the state is a facet called whole harmless. This is a calculation indicating that the base revenue limit from one year is lower than the prior year. In those situations, the state gives you a one-year exemption to maintain that revenue limit for one continuous year. The problem being is that exemption is then subtracted from your starting line the following year. The 2325 state budget increase of low revenue ceiling was not available, as I mentioned earlier, in our planning into this past spring and summer, but has recently come into clarity in the last couple of weeks. A state approval of this authority is not in question at this point. We've got confirmation from DPI at the prevailing statute for among 2195 and their 2017 Act 11, it really is, has a new subparagraph eight that clarifies that we do have access to low revenue ceiling for this coming year. What still needs to run through the legislature is the actual repeal of the full law, which will remove the penalty we've been discussing regarding what Dale Rep. Brennan does to the 19 districts across the state, including us, that would have frozen our revenue limit for three years. Okay. Quickly to highlight the change in the Third Friday average graphically. Our membership over the last five years has remained relatively stable. In comparison to the rest of the state, our enrollment decrease is not as severe as some of our neighbors, which is thankful. However, we do need to acknowledge that as we develop future budgets, we are looking with the three-year average that is still absorbing the impacts we saw from COVID, as well as some other local factors that changed our enrollment figures. And now in the revenue limit itself, the revenue limit per member, as I mentioned earlier, we do have access to the $11,000 multiplier, but I've highlighted two figures on this page just for clarity. I mentioned that whole harmless exemption of these slides back. In the 2122 and the 2223 school year, this exemption was triggered due to the fact there was no per pupil increase in the revenue limit. Therefore, these two amounts were subtracted from base revenue the year following the event. The non-recurring exemptions in the Milton budget the last several years has included the rep. to exceed an amount of current basis of 2.5 million, and our declining enrollment exemption of $370,000 in 2122, up to $434,000 in the current year. I've also note, I've noted in here as well, is the private school voucher amounts for this year have increased significantly. This is a trend occurring across the state. In the state budget this year, the rates for the private school voucher program increased from 20 to 37 percent. And our total cost to the district this year increased 36 percent in the current year budget. That means the total revenue limit for this upcoming year went from $38.1 million in 2223 to $40,780,000 in the current budget cycle. Next, I want to highlight something we don't normally talk about when developing school budgets, but it is of significant importance in setting the levy tonight, as it is where a significant portion of the state budget went in the last couple of weeks. A school levy tax credit program has been in place for a number of decades. But in the state budget this year, there were two significant investments. One was in the state general aid program, which we all take a share in, is one of the 420-plus districts in the state. In addition to that, the state budget considers the two-thirds funding commitment, if you go back all the way to the early 90s. There's this program called the Tax Levy Credit Program. This means that based on all school levies set across the state, a certain amount of money is applied back to each municipality on a average basis and proportioned against the property wealth in that municipality. Reason I bring it up in this sense is we don't control this funding. However, since it's considered part of what the state invests in kids' all public education, I want to bring it up in this discussion because for the first time, this pot of money went up at a higher rate than the state paid pool itself. The school levy credit program increased by $590 million at the state level, and the equalization paid pool increased $543 million. For us, this is significant because when we set our tax levy tonight, we are indicating an increase in our tax levy of 3.65 percent. However, we can't take credit, forgive the pun, for what the state is now giving us on tax credits that will go back to every homeowner in this district. The state pool for school tax credits went up roughly 27 percent statewide. Based on our, working with DPI and some of my colleagues across the state, we've identified that the School District of Milton is eligible for about $818,000 of tax credits that will come back to municipalities that we serve. That means that on everyone's individual tax bill, which I'm going to go back and forth here for a second, you may have seen this box on your tax bill far right, and it specifically reads "School Taxes Reduced by School Levy Tax Credit." That dollar amount, whatever it was on your assessment last year, will increase roughly 24 percent going into January of '24. Now, if you were reassessed this year, it may be somewhat different. However, the reason I bring this up is how we set the levy tonight will be offset by the increase in that credit. This is the largest single increase in the school levy tax credit programs since we began. So I bring it up tonight as we talk about, I know that our taxpayers are sensitive to changes in our tax increase in the school district, but it bears repeating that a lot of the school district funding at the state level went to this program instead of the regular education.
Ross, can you share again what that approximate total amount is for our anticipated before our school district?
Yes. So the anticipated increase for the Milton School District is around $818,000, and that is actually a conservative estimate based on the total pool of $590 million I mentioned before. It could be more, but I do not want to overstate what that impact may be, because again, we don't control this funding. It goes through municipalities and is put as a tax credit directly against tax cuts. Any other questions? All right. Next, I want to highlight what has changed to our general fund since our annual meeting. This is a publication summary of our Fund 10 budget since our last meeting. The most significant change is acknowledgement of the revenue authority that is hitting our Fund 10 general fund. Our total revenues and expenses are expected to be around $48.8 million, up significantly since annual meeting due to that authority. Some highlights on what has changed since the annual meeting. Our revenue has been updated in a few areas. One is that our open enrollment revenue increased about $467,000. This is due to two reasons. One, we already knew that the state budget had increased open enrollment per pupil amount significantly, but we saw a pretty few more kids than anticipated come through our open enrollment in process as we did our enrollment counts this September. And in addition, I want to indicate that the total tax levy we're talking about tonight has increased $151,000 due primarily to increases in private school voucher students and one-time exemptions due to transfer service, which was on an earlier slide for how we built up the revenue limit. And then finally, I do want to highlight that we did have the option to capture the entirety of the new revenue limit authority in this vote tonight, but instead of making that a pure tax impact to our taxpayers, we have changed our debt-depleasing strategy that we're going to be using for this year, and we wanted to do that specifically to minimize the impact to our taxpayers, which we're speaking to tonight. However, the change between the school levy tax credit amount, $818,000, and the total increase of the levy is nearly identical, and that was intentional. So the total tax increase on the levy vote tonight is nearly identical to the school voucher tax, or, I'm sorry, the school levy tax credit that we've been discussing. On the expenditure side, we did increase our open enrollment expenditures by $173,000, again due to increased resident students attending other public school districts. The net increase in one-time spending that we have planned for this coming year is about $1.3 million, and that will be accomplished by accelerating some of the items on our capital maintenance, started our long-term capital maintenance plan, as well as some emerging technology needs that have needed attention, but we have not been identified by the source. And then finally, we are increasing the transfers from Fund 46, our long-term capital maintenance plan fund, by about $900,000 to the transfer year-end ending call about to perform this year. Which then leads us to the total tax levy before us tonight, which is $0.2666,000, an increase over the prior year of 3.65 percent. Of note is our equalized mill rate, which we required to report on when we set our tax levy, will be decreasing significantly by nearly 8 percent, from $8.11 per thousand to $7.49 per thousand. And with that, I don't entertain any questions you may have about Anthony.
Ross, you mentioned it in one of the other memos, and you spoke about it at my Finance Committee meeting, but could you touch a bit more on some of the capital expenditures that would be made as part of that?
Yes.
I know there's mentions of boilers and things, but chillers, could you just go through that for the audience?
Sure. So of the $1.3 million, there's a significant portion towards the maintenance, as you mentioned, as well as tech purchases. Those items include the Northside chillers at the Northside proper, which is the original system, back to the 90s, the boiler at Consolidated, which would be a similar retrofit to what we did at the middle school, the high school auditorium chilling coil, which is not part of the rec. scope, is also being added. We are replacing some, what I understand to be decades-old lunch tables at the high school, which need attention. On the tech technology side, we have need to upgrade our server storage. We have a number of software items that are still hosted locally as opposed to hosting off-site. We need to upgrade our Windows Server licenses, and we have a need of a new firewall appliance to navigate all our internet traffic from the district. And then finally, we want to update the safety of all of our buildings, and I understand our camera system needs some remediation after purchasing roughly 10 years ago. Thank you.
Ross, I just want to say thank you for putting this together. I was able to attend the Finance Committee meeting, and I know a few meetings back, wanted to make sure that we were being careful to our taxpayers, especially at a time like this, and whether it was presented with that school levy tax credit being able to offset. I feel comfortable now that we're making the right decision for the district as well as for our taxpayers. So thank you for the information that you presented.
Yeah, I too wanted to say thanks, Ross, and I'll say it because you probably wouldn't on your behalf. Your job is a little more challenging this year than selling because of the $11 changes to the budgeting process, and you explained that to us at the committee meeting, and I gained a new appreciation for how quickly you had to sort of redo what you thought was already done when the numbers changed. So for you and obviously your staff and the folks that work with you, thank you for that, because the clarity that you presented it with, both at the committee level and tonight, is very, very, very helpful. Anybody else with questions for Ross or the committee?
I think just one final comment, and again, because we condensed, what, a two-hour conversation into 15 minutes here? You know, in the Finance Committee, you know, we really talked about the highlights of this, and I know you touched upon it, Ross, but just to reemphasize, we've covered maintenance and capital expenditures. We really strove to maintain stability on a year-to-year basis, provides for a balanced budget at the end of the day. We're reducing our debt and saving interest expense. Significant portion of this, and I won't tell you the numbers, I'll let you do that, but a significant portion is being offset by the school levy credits, and at the end of the day, trying to provide balance between our taxpayers and the needs of our kids, and I think to the best extent that we can that this budget does that. So thank you for putting that time into that. With that, I would move to approve and knock the budget as presented, the total tax levy of $22,666,652, consisting of $16,817,168 of general fund, $5,445,100 of debt service, and $404,384 of community service fund. I'll second that.
Thank you. Dave's motion, when seconded by John, is on the floor. Does anyone have any additional questions that we can address? And thank you to Dave for the eloquence. That's exactly the way the motion was presented, and if there are no further questions, we will vote. We need to vote all of this one, so I guess I'll jump to my right and go with Dave.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
And Tracy.
Yes.
And Rick.
Yes.
And Joe is yes.
Yes.
And we'll note that Ed is absent. I call that ask six zero. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
For all of your valuable input and guidance there. All right, that is the only function of normal business that we have. Miscellaneous is up next. A is our staffing report.
I do want to note for the board that there was an updated staffing report that was put in board docs today. There was one additional item on the staffing report.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Thank you. John's motion, seconded by Rick to approve our staffing report. Does anyone have questions? Those in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're good with our staffing report. Meeting day. Opposed? Thank you. We're good with our staffing report. Meeting dates, oops, I'm sorry, cannot overlook the generosity of our community, and we have gifts and donations.
I'm going to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Tracy's motion, seconded by Dave, is to approve our gifts and donations with the gratitude of the district and the board. Questions? All in favor of approval, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And thank you for that. Now we'll have meeting dates.
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on Monday, November 13th. That's three weeks from tonight, because October is a five-Monday month. So Monday, November 13th at 6:30, regular board meeting. We have an HR committee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, October 25th at 10:00 a.m. That would be in the first-floor conference room for the HR committee. We are planning a curriculum committee, and until a way is out, we want to get that on calendar as soon as possible. We have a date and time that work for both Jennifer and Tracy. Ed isn't here tonight, so we'll check with Ed, but a tentative date on that of November 27th at 5:30 p.m., and we'll check with Ed and then verify that. And then, one thing to be looking at your calendars, and again, we don't need to finalize that today, but Carly will reach out on availability. We're looking for a date in December for data workshop, once we're able to publicly share our report card data, and we'll also have some ACT data, some call eye-ready data, and SCL assessment data and information. And we're looking at the possible meeting for that on Monday, December 18th at 6:30. Our regular Monday board time isn't a board meeting night, but we only have one board meeting in December, which we do for that on the 11th, is the regular meeting, and then the data workshop, if it works for both on 18th. So we'll reach out by email to see about availability for that.
Any questions on the dates? Who wants to go home?
I move right here.
Second, let me thank you. Got to follow procedure, folks. Rick's motion is seconded by John. All in favor, aye. Thank you. Safe travels, everyone.